Well, good afternoon. It's three o'clock and this is a special meeting of the Pullman City Council called by several members of our city council to discuss fireworks. Matter of fact, I will just briefly talk about what the three items are. It's a special meeting, so we can only talk about those three items. One is an ordinance amending a city code. We'll talk about that here in a few. The second one's discussion of potential action on revoking licenses or and/or permits of sale of retail fireworks and public display of fireworks for the city limits of Pullman. Third one is a discussion of potential action on emergency action banning the discharge of fireworks within the city limits. Those are the three items. We stick to that because that is exactly what we have to do in a special meeting. First of all, Dee, why don't you call roll?
Thank you. Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember McCall? Councilmember Parks?
Here on the phone.
Councilmember Records?
Here.
Councilmember Sorenson? Councilmember Weller?
Present.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
And we know that Eileen is in the building. Apparently she's apparently have a little computer problem right at this moment. We did hear from Al Sorenson that he also had a conflicting appointment, but he did notify us of that. So at this time, do I hear a motion to excuse Al Sorenson from this meeting?
Don't move. Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And again, I know Eileen's here, so we'll see her momentarily. And Anne, you did get on because I know that you were having some technical issues too, right?
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Okay. So with that, the first item, and again, we're sticking with the established special meeting agenda is an ordinance, revised ordinance. And with that, Dan Records, thank you for the work you've put in on this one. Dan, you're going to have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So with a number of people raising concerns about the dry conditions this year and the prospect of Fourth of July just around the corner here. Looking into it and talking with city staff who are looking into this issue, it's apparent that there's many communities around the state that are attempting to enact or looking at the issue of possibly enacting bans on fireworks. And in reviewing the state code, city staff have been having these discussions as many communities are. And under the current Washington state law, the RCW discussing fireworks, cities and municipalities can implement ordinances on fireworks, which the city of Pullman does have a fireworks ordinance. But anytime the city wants to implement something more strict than the state law, there is a one-year kind of waiting period before that adopted ordinance can be enacted. And so thinking about this, the current state of the city ordinance is that there is no mechanism for a temporary ban due to conditions. And so what I proposed here is the modifications to our ordinance that would allow the designation of the fire chief to determine when fire conditions are such that there is an extreme fire danger where we may put in place a temporary fireworks ban. Now this, because of that state law would not go into effect for 365 days. So thinking about, since it's not currently an option on the table for us this year, thinking about this for next year and in the future, if such a situation occurs, this would give us a local option to have our local experts make a determination about the fire danger. And then we could enact a ban at that point. So that's where this ordinance is coming from and these modifications. And in those discussions, we also looked at our current ordinance has a section in there that discusses no fireworks, private fireworks used in consumer fireworks discharged in Sunnyside Park. And we just thought it would be prudent to also at this time potentially add that no discharge of consumer fireworks in any parks or any public property owned by the city of Pullman. So that's what the proposal is in this ordinance on the table. And I'd welcome any discussion from other council members this time.
So that ordinance-
We'll go to Pat Wright first and then I'll go to Brandon. So Pat?
That ordinance, as you're proposing it, Dan, would still be the 365 days. So we're looking at that going forward. Correct? Okay, thank you.
So not, this would not go into effect immediately. It would go into effect so that we would have the option next year. But this particular ordinance, item number one on the agenda is just about the future, not about right now.
Got it. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And again, Laura's on the line here. I know she's at a different location, but Laura, I mean, this is exactly what we went through. I think about four or five years ago when we finally tried to change the ordinance and then found out like all cities have that way the lobbyists have taken care of fireworks, you have, you can't do anything for this immediate year. You have to wait 365. Laura, do you want to chime in on that one?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. So the ordinance can't take effect by state law, can't take effect until 365 days after its adoption. So in order for it to be in effect for next year's Fourth of July season, it would have to be adopted before the Fourth of July. So it wouldn't be in effect until July 1 of next year.
And for the council, we actually have the ordinance here. I'm at City Hall. And if the council so chooses and it passes, I will sign it immediately today. So it is done before the Fourth of July. Brandon, you were next up.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe Laura can answer this. Do you know what the reasoning behind the 365 days was or the philosophy behind that?
I don't, council member. It has been that way for many, many years, decades.
No, that's okay. This is purely hypothetical. I wondered if it was, had anything to do with just to curb any kind of abuse of powers and things like that because it was such a long wait period in which case I think that would be, it seems prudent to have that wait period. I guess on that token though, I would love to see something in here somewhere that sunsets this at some point. So if the fire chief can prohibit it, at what point is that not just become, I don't know, under their discretion at that point? I mean, is there any kind of time standard we could put on that? So we revisit, you know, two weeks, a month or something so that we can call that back and then they would have to do it again or I don't know the legality of that.
Dan, you've been working on this quite some time and this again, it's council action to go along with the fire chief. So Dan?
Right. So the way that it's currently written is that the fire chief may prohibit the discharge and sale of all fireworks during periods of extreme fire danger. So as soon as that extreme fire danger is over, that would be the end. But since we would be imbuing this kind of discretion to make that determination in the fire chief and the fire chief being our most likely expert at the city, that would be their determination to declare when that extreme fire danger exists. But this would only be during those periods when there is a declared state of extreme fire danger. And it would not extend to any other, any other time period. So it's not like the fire chief could just in, say, you know, indefinitely, we're going to ban fireworks in Pullman. It would have to be tied to that extreme fire danger situation. And in talking about these kind of emergency powers, I don't know if it, you know, the purpose of these is for somebody to make a determination that there's an emergency condition. And those are always going to have kind of that a little bit more open-ended because we don't know when the fire danger is going to end. And so that's a determination on the ground that we leave kind of in the hands of an expert or somebody that can make that determination in those emergency circumstances.
Mayor, if I could add?
Yes, please.
If I can add for councilmember Chapman that this provision is part of, it's being proposed as part of Pullman's adoption of the International Fire Code. So the standards and the standards are consistent with the International Fire Code that is required and mandated by state law for all fire marshals and fire chiefs, but it's also the same code that allows, say, a burn ban to be initiated by the chief or by the fire marshal. So these are, this, these are the types of prohibitions that fire chiefs and fire marshals impose all the time based on fire conditions. But what's unusual is what a number of cities have been dealing with right now, which is the fact that you've got this 365-day wait period. And it's just not clear what authority a fire marshal has right now under the fire code to be able to initiate a ban. So what this would do is it would make it perfectly clear in Pullman next year, in 2022, that the fire marshal or fire chief does have the authority to initiate a ban when conditions require it. It's just not clear right now. And that's, you know, that's more, we can talk about it more when the other topics come up. But this is a situation that many cities in Eastern Washington are struggling with right now.
Yeah. Okay. No, I appreciate that. And I'm always just a little wary of, I guess, giving the authority over and not having a mechanism for it. And but the burn ban is a good example, I guess, a good parallel. So yeah, no, I appreciate that.
And we did put out a burn ban notice the other day for Lester Irwin for District 12 and 14. That was effective as of July 1. Eileen, then we'll go to Nathan. Eileen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems how we're adopting language of the International Fire Code. Are we, do we have some flexibility in amending the language a little bit for clarity?
It depends on what you want to say. Your limitations are actually due to the special meeting. That you can't take final action at a special meeting on something that, that item of business or that topic, that matter hasn't been announced 24 hours prior. So it would depend on what type of revisions you would like to propose.
I don't know if we want to start in the wordsmithing right now, but in the whereas clause, I'd like to see the term prohibition changed to temporary suspension of the discharge and sale of fireworks during extreme danger. And I think it should say, it should clarify extreme fire danger. You know, I realize that that's the title on there is fire code, but I think that, that addition, because what's extreme danger? I mean, it could be an earthquake or an avalanche. And if people shoot off fireworks during that, I'm not that worried about it. So we could add, you know, maybe change that one language to temporary suspension and make people a little more accepting and a little more comfortable of this. And then change that to extreme and add that word extreme fire danger. And I have a couple of other suggestions for later in the discussion.
I would not have any concerns with changing.
We have an ordinance that's already been drafted up that we can actually take action on today. I could, I could add those words to and handwrite those words in temporary suspension and extreme fire danger before I sign it. But again, we're under that deadline. We've got to get it done today.
Understood, but we could pass it as amended from the floor, couldn't we?
Yes, that is correct. And I frankly don't have any concerns with any wordsmithing of the whereas section because that's not operative.
Okay.
That's just a policy statement. And the actual effective language and the action that you would be taking is in the be it resolved section.
Okay. Nathan, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Laura or Dan, if you could answer this. I know there's a few different cities who have enacted bans here in Washington. Can you explain, did they already have existing 365-day ordinance, the thing that we're talking about right now?
Laura, do you want to answer that?
I didn't hear the full question. Were you asking about the cities that are able to initiate a ban right now? They have language like this?
Yeah.
Yes.
They have already done it several years ago.
Yes, but there are also cities that are enacting bans without having this language in their specific city code. It's actually the fire officials, the fire chiefs, that are simply using their authority under public safety and the International Fire Code to go ahead and enact a ban.
Follow up. So does that mean that really the, if there was a ban to be enacted, that would need to be enacted by Chief Heston? We can't do it and we'll get sued, correct?
Yes, that's, that's, well, it is my opinion that the best way for a ban to be enacted in 2021 would be for the chief fire official to do it. I think under a city code, that could be either the fire chief or his designated assistant fire chief or the fire marshal.
Okay. Okay. Other questions of Laura, or we have both Ryan Scharnhorst on the line here is our Assistant Chief and Chris Waring, our Fire Marshal is on the line with us. We have questions of him. When we were talking earlier this week, when the temperatures were in triple digits and now they're in the nineties, that was also a concern. Anne, did you have a comment?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I would be interested to know, and you just touched on it. I've been hearing, well, first of all, I want to say that I want to thank everybody for doing this and for making this happen because I know that as council members, we have been here-
I know that as council members, we have been hearing loud and clear from the Pullman residents that they are very concerned about the dry conditions in the area. It isn't necessarily the heat, though that doesn't help. It's just simply how dry everything is. And so and and I'm talking about individual fireworks at this moment, not the city fireworks, but anyway, just overall. But I would like to know from the fire personnel, whomever would like to answer this, what their thoughts are about the potential dangers and and whether they feel, uh, that this is an appropriate action to be considering for this year.
Do we want to do we want to hold off on the discussion on the additional agenda items until we resolve?
That that doesn't come up until two and three. Right now, we're really with this matter to take care of the issue in the future. So it can take effect immediately. So Eileen, we'll go to Eileen next.
Well, thank you. Um, I think I'm still in section with section one here. I did a lot of hasty scribbling. And and again, under where it says point ten emergency, uh, fireworks, I would like that language, uh, adjusted to temporary suspension of sale and use, um, if that would be possible. And on the second line of the underscore there, where it says all fireworks, I would like it to say either consumer fireworks or personal fireworks, again, for the sake of clarity. And, uh, and I was a little confused. Like I said, I know this language has been lifted from other documents. It is during this period that wildland fires can be expected. Um, I I would like this to focus a little more on Pullman and have it refer to how this would impact the city or our 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 focus is on the city limits because that's our jurisdiction. I mean, say something like within the city limits that could impact surrounding areas. Because it just seems strange. All of a sudden, we were talking about wildland fires. Did this make any sense there?
Rush fires or something. Okay.
Uh, that language, this, the language was pulled from Oshugles, um, current man or current language.
Sure.
Uh, so the wildland find art or wildland fire language actually did make sense to me because it relates to what can be caused. Really wildfires are, uh, the the larger public risk than, uh, while despite the devastation of a single house fire, um, in an urban area, there's there are more resources available to deal with the, uh, a fire caused by fireworks within city limits. It's really kind of what happens on the outskirts of town and the fields catching on fire and then the wind taking the fire and taking it away. Uh, but that's that's and that I'd be glad to hear from from the fire officials on that. I guess I would I would be hesitant to do any significant word changes to the be it resolved section because I think you're then open to challenge under the Special Meetings Act that you didn't get notice of the action that you wanted to be taken. I it it, I, you know, I apologize. We tried to put together an ordinance, but without much, uh, information on what it was that any individual council member wanted to to do. But knowing you had to have an ordinance in front of you if you intended to take any action at this meeting. And that ordinance had to be published.
We have wildland fire truck in, and we do have cases where, you know, the cotton fluff is considered we've had, we've had that around here too. So let's go to, uh, we'll go to the rank Assistant Chief. Chris Waring gets some opinions. So Ryan, come on, uh, Ryan Scharnhorst, our Assistant Chief. There you are. Okay. You've heard some questions about it, but a-again, uh, this ordinance, where again, we're talking three hundred and sixty five days plus, we're not talking about the the other discussion items right now. Would this cover you for what you what you need? And Chris, the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, good discussion on this. I would point out that I believe that fireworks are only permitted to be discharged in the city by code three dates a year, and that's the third, fourth, and New Year's Eve. So there may be a little bit of, uh, existing guidance in our code already to put parameters of how long this, uh, uh, ordinance would be allowed for if the fire chiefs or fire marshal so deemed it. Uh, so I hope that would help with that.
Good point. Yes, thank you.
And and then in regards to the rest of it, I'm not sure if Fire Marshal Waring, who is more knowledgeable. Uh, he has any comments you'd like to?
There's a reference in the Fire Code that gives us authority to help prove, uh, it's under chapter one of the Fire Code, one oh two point nine, this is matters not provided for in the code, what our responsibilities are for protection of the public. And it states requirements that are essential for the public safety of an existing or proposed activity, building or structure, or for the safety of the occupants thereof that are not specified, provided for by this code shall be determined by the Fire Code official. So in that language, they're saying we have the authority to say that's an unsafe act. Stop it. So in some ways that could, uh, make it if we have a bad, dry weather that the fire chief can say, um, uh, a fire ban, if you will.
Good. So right now, we're we're again, we're talking about, Dan, and you raised your hand earlier and and Dan, I want to thank you for the effort you've put in on this ordinance to get this thing done on really short time with Laura. So thank you. So Dan, once again.
Well, the the credit to that mostly goes to Laura. I'll say that. But, um, the my recommendation would be to not change the the wording of the the actual code section that we're talking about revising. I I agree with Laura. I think the the, you know, the introductory whereas section, um, we can put those those, uh, suggestions in there. But in terms of emergency fireworks ban, uh, sale and use, I think the the word emergency also denotes kind of that this is a temporary. Um, and and it is a ban, but it's a temporary ban. Um, and and in terms of the wildland fires and the mention of that, um, you know, I I think that, you know, I don't think there's anything in there that really changes the nature of this, the ordinance to in to leave that in there. Um, and and that is, uh, the larger danger is uncontrolled wildfires that may get started in extreme fire danger conditions by fireworks that that get out of hand and cause extreme, uh, safety hazards and and risk of, uh, loss of life and and property. So I I think leaving wildland fires in there makes sense to me because that's, you know, that's the situation that we deal with most often in Eastern Washington in dry conditions, um, from all sorts of fire hazards, including, you know, lightning strikes and, uh, uh, other agricultural fires that that get started. Um, so I I recommend that we leave that in there, um, and that we go forward with the language as proposed, um, just so that we can get it and make sure that we can adopt it today. Um, so that next year, if this situation comes up, um, we have the authority to go forward based on that. Um, this, this is really, like I said, this is just perspective looking because of the way the state statute is written. This, this gives us a very clear authority, um, for the fire chief to make this determination in the future. Um, and then, you know, when we get to the next agenda items, we can discuss the other areas of of the current year. But I think we need to get this on the books so that that it's very clear in the future. And then we can start to address, you know, the discussion of of this year.
Okay, other comments, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ryan, could you, uh, also explain, you had mentioned three dates, um, what, New Year's, third, fourth, uh, but also we have fireworks that occur for baseball games. I believe there's contracts with that. Uh, at least there have been in the past. Um, so.
And there's there's fireworks at football games too at after certain times. Uh, those are all by, uh, I think they're, I know that noise ordinance comes into effect on those. But Ryan?
That's probably more of a Chris answer, but good question there, Councilmember Weller. Uh, there are other events around the community, but they are special permits that, uh, have to go through process and are uh, shall be automatic date that is permitted. Uh, Chris, any comments on how that procedure works?
Uh, they permit for football games and baseball games. They have to demonstrate what they're going to be doing. Uh, what kind of, uh, uh, they're called reports. Instead of fireworks, there are big bangs, uh, for when whenever the Cougars score. Um, but we have a demonstration and there's a whole permit process and approval approval process, uh, for those events. So it it's, we go up there, we take a look at what they're trying to demonstrate, what there's what they're going to use. Um, flame carts and we issue the permit and, uh, they have all the, uh, insurance and records of what they're doing. And it's always been a very safe environment, especially up on campus. And for the fireworks show, uh, the up at Sunnyside Park, that individual, um, has lots of, he comes in, he is, I issue him his permit on the day of the fireworks show. And I measure what he has. I measured off all the distances, a lot of safety factors involved in any any of this. Um, uh, but there's just a whole lot of inspections that I have to do and make sure that they're in compliance with, uh, the Fire Code.
And then we also put a circle around. We have rings where people can't get any closer than we're also shooting a certain diameter that because we can only do it by, I think, three and a half inches this year. We when we were out in the north area, we had a area we didn't have homes around to have made a difference. So everything is very closely monitored on that. So. Any other questions on that, Nathan?
No, I just wanted to mention that fireworks do occur at other times, uh, in the year. So.
Matter of fact, I even saw fireworks inside Beasley Coliseum when we had, uh, Clay Thompson honored. And I think that I don't think they did it for rattling, but they actually had indoor fireworks. And Chris had to go through and approve that because that was a tricky one. So. Okay, other, uh, back to Dan records.
Um, I was just going to say, just for clarification, that, you know, the permitted fireworks displays, um, those are at the discretion of the the fire department already. So they're already doing those safety reviews. So that's that's very different than what we're talking about in terms of a general ban um, on those permitted, uh, dates by state law and and what's permitted in our in our city ordinance. So, um, I I just wanted to say that that's that's very different, that they're already going through a much more rigorous safety check in that permitting process. Um, but what we're talking about here is giving, making sure that it's clear that the fire chief also has the authority to ban those general use days that don't normally require a permit. And those safety checks aren't being done, um, on those three dates so that we have discretion in case there is a large, uh, public safety threat in the future.
Any other questions on this? And, uh, if I don't see any, Dan, do you want to make the motion on the ordinance? Do you help with Laura to put together?
Sure, I move to pass ordinance number, uh, twenty one dash eight.
Second.
We had a motion to second. I will read it because I know, uh, Laura's.
Thank you, Mayor.
Or you you have it in front of you?
And no, I do not. I was just going to let you know. I don't have it.
You're on again. Ordinance twenty one eight, uh, ordinance amending Pullman City Code three point one six point oh one five and three point one six point oh two oh and other matters properly related there to. Boy, we've had a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. Okay. Now we come to item number two, and this is a discussion. Potential action revoking licenses or permit for the sale. It's it's a two parter of, uh, retail fireworks and public display of fireworks in the city limits of Pullman. Nathan, you were the one who put this on the agenda, so it's your turn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, ultimately, I think what's alre-already been said is, uh, uh, very appropriate when Ann mentioned that, uh, many citizens, uh, have sent us emails and, um, uh, through social media, through city emails, uh, personally, I'm sure other people have also received um, uh, queries as to why we are not banning, uh, fireworks and, um, grouped in this, and I don't think it's appropriate to group it in with the general ban, but is the public, uh, firework display. Um, I will read you off because I had sent this to the, uh, Pullman Chamber, um, uh, Fourth of July Committee, and apparently things had um, gotten a little bit out there more. But some of the information that I had garnered after I had seen some questions and concerns on the Nextdoor app, um, and then began doing my own research. So, um, I'll just read this off so everybody's on the same page. Um, I know Mayor Johnson has received this. I know Mike has as well. Okay, the subject of fireworks in Pullman has come up in the past and we have restricted their sale and use over the years. At first, I was disappointed about our restrictions because my family always enjoyed setting them off, watching them at Sunnyside. In the past, we wore coat coats or brought umbrellas because it was too cold or raining, but times have changed. Citizens are contacting us more than previous years about how we need to ban personal fireworks and even the public display. This is what prompted me to contact our city administrator, mayor, fire chief and Chamber of Commerce. Um, before we even came to the idea of a special meeting, um, to discuss possible solutions or a way forward. All around us, cities are banning fireworks. Now, we understand the ordinance were already in paid in place to do that. But we also have heard that, um, fire chiefs can declare that apparently as well, but maybe we'll hear more about that. Um, some only the personal use, others the public display and still more ban all use and delaying their display. I'm not saying banning the display, delaying the display such as Spokane. Yes, we came out of a pandemic. This is one of the concerns that has been brought up. And we all want a sense of normalcy, but risking a local or regional fire must be weighed against this urge. As I talk to the many partners and citizens, one thing is common and we all, I believe, are on the same page. We want what's best for the community and what's safe, but differ on what that is. From those discussions, there are several arguments that have been placed for public display or against um, and personal as well. So from what I've heard, and I will briefly go through the, um, some of these will not do all of them. Um, there is a contract and there will be a financial cost to canceling the public display. There will be, but display can be, uh, as we've all seen, delayed as long as it's before Labor Day. Uh, the public fireworks display has been safe for over forty years. We have Whitman County Fire District twelve and Pullman Fire Department on staff. The park is watered down before the fireworks show and is professionally monitored by a pyrotechnic expert. I believe I am not the only one on this call or in the community that recognized the excellent work that Pullman Fire Department and Whitman County, uh, District twelve does in our community and region. Uh, things have changed. This year is hotter. It is drier. As Ann mentioned, people are more concerned about the dry aspect than the heat, but it's also about being too hot. Another concern, and the reason I'm a little is because I've received some very negative comments because there's been some, uh, confusion. Okay, after a long period of restrictions from the pandemic, it's a way to celebrate and get back to normal. We do not need to celebrate everything with fireworks. Okay, you can have a party, you can have a barbecue, we can have the fireworks at a time when, uh, it is not so dry. And from what I've seen on the radar and the data that I've seen, and of course, uh, Ryan or Chief Waring can can correct me if I'm wrong, it's in extreme fire danger right now, but I can be corrected on that and I am more than open to anyone correcting me. These are the two most important points that people have brought up as far as arguments. A public display provides a single event for people to celebrate and see workout, see fireworks and will reduce personal firework use in the community, thereby reducing the possibility of fires and messaging has gone out about restricting personal fireworks and instead watch the public display. I have a few questions and concerns of my own, but also that have brought up been brought up by citizens. Will it reduce personal firework use or show people that fireworks are okay to use because there is a public display? This is messaging. Keep in mind, the public doesn't see all of the preparation, which is extensive, that occurs to make the area safe. Keep in mind, the public doesn't see all of the preparation, which is extensive, that occurs to make the area safe. And again, very appreciative, I know everybody is, of Fire District twelve and our own fire departments. Only a portion of the Pullman community will see the display from their home since it is on Sunnyside Hill and the public is being discouraged from going to the event at the park. Just today, when I was at the gym, this apparently was not really known to one individual who wanted to come in from Colton to see the fireworks display. Okay, the people that were wanting to use fireworks will use them despite messaging or a public display. However, having a public dis- display can convince people that were wondering if they should use the fireworks they've bought and are on the fence about their use because we are firing them off as a public display. Not everyone will get the message. I believe this was mentioned at goal setting. Our message does not get out to everyone. Despite all of the social media, radio, newspaper, everything that we've done, not everybody will get the message to not use personal fireworks. It is also, in my opinion, a mixed message and essentially says, do as we say, not as we do. If we would have a public fire display, it is important to lead from the front. If we are saying, do not use them in your own homes, we're displaying them out there in the public and it is my opinion that the behavior will say, yes, let's use them in our own homes. The city is doing it, the chamber is putting it on. I know, Pat, I see what you're saying right now. Now, citizens have requested to forego or delay the private use and public display this year due to fire concerns, plain and simple. And it is obvious from the pandemic that people do not necessarily listen to the messaging or follow the advice even from experts or authority. How would this, this be different? This is, this is where I'm coming from. I do not disagree with Fire Chief Heston or the assessments that have come already on the safety and professionalism of our department response. He is the expert. But I do disagree with the assumption of human behavior in relationship to a firework display. It is approximately forty-five minute display seen by maybe one-third of Pullman residents from their home, mainly near Sunnyside. But what message does it send to all of Pullman? I'm making an assumption that people who aren't able to see the display will have the thought that there is still a public display, so everything isn't as bad as they've heard and will be more inclined to light their own fireworks. That is the assumption I'm making. It sends a conflicted message similar to the mask ordinance with the pandemic. Experts said, wear the mask, but what a person does in public is more impactful for, than what they say or do. We would be firing off public fireworks as a display and telling people, don't fire off your fireworks. Now, this discussion, I am not saying ban the public display. This discussion was meant to create dialogue, address issues and find a way to work collaboratively to address our citizen and community concerns. I want the Chamber of Commerce and City of Pullman to be on the same page regarding this and do not want to force a cancellation by canceling the use of the park. I want the Pullman Chamber Fourth of July Committee to consider the points and counterpoints made and come to their own decision based on information and input from the entire committee. This is not me saying ban anything, it's saying delay. I know I will face criticism, already have, about this subject. And rightly so, because most see it as an enjoyable and significant event which brings money into our community. However, times are changing and the personal and public display of fireworks brings not only the risk of fire to our community and region, but also affects PTSD sufferers and others who suffer from sensory overload disorder along with our first responders and animals as well as dogs, cats, wildlife. It's important for all of us to be cognizant of how it impacts everything and everyone in the region from property and crops to individuals' physical and mental health. Again, this is not me saying ban the display. I want everybody to be understanding of that. It is me bringing forth the concerns that I have heard from citizens in my own. And that's it.
Okay, we'll go to council reaction, we'll go to the fire chiefs because obviously we don't do a, a public display of fireworks unless we've consulted with the fire chiefs beforehand. If the fire chief said there's extreme fire danger and don't do it, we wouldn't do it. Just that's one thing from the Fourth of July Committee. Council members. Comments. Brandon, you were getting ready?
I've got, I've got many things on my mind. And Nathan, I, I don't think you're necessarily wrong on any of those. I, I think sometimes there's multiple wrongs, there's multiple rights. So you, you know, I, I heard something about the burn ban. I don't even think we have a burn ban in, in Pullman right now. So it's, I don't know, it's, do we?
Not, not in Pullman, only Whitman County, Rural District twelve.
Yeah.
Also District fourteen, which is Colton.
Yeah, so I, you know, for me, I, I look at this as one where my, my family, we will not be lighting off personal fireworks this year. I also know that there's a vast difference between my expertise and a controlled environment like, like Sunnyside. And this is one of those where I, I feel like there, there still is a difference. I mean, we know there's a difference between a, a a person lighting them off versus an expert lighting them off with, with fire, with, with planning, with the things that they do to prep for, for the fireworks. All kinds of contingencies are, are considered and I, I don't know in this case if there's a message of hypocrisy. I, I don't feel like there, there is because there is a difference in expertise involved. And so yeah, I, I, I get what you're saying, Nathan, I do. And I, I will not, absolutely not criticize you. So I will not be among those people. So when I say that I, I'm not necessarily in favor of encouraging people, I would discourage personal use. I also would encourage us to, to continue with the fireworks show that the city is doing in this controlled environment. But, but I'm not going to count myself among the critics.
Other comments. Dan records.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll join Brandon in saying that I, I'm personally not going to be lighting off any fireworks this either. And, and I would tell that everybody else not to, not to use personal fireworks because the, the risk is too high right now, I think. And I, I do think though, that there is a significant difference in, in the public display of, of fireworks compared to the personal use of fireworks. And to just highlight the fact that there are other, you know, the earlier discussion where we were talking about, there are other displays of fireworks at other times throughout the year that are permitted, that go through that safety review, that are done by professionals. And, and we don't allow those, those types of, we don't allow personal use of fireworks at other times of the year. It's, it's against state law, but it's, the reason for that is, is, you know, because if it was just, anybody could use them at any time, it would be a fairly dangerous situation without some of that safety planning. The fact that they, that it is allowed during these three days, we can kind of know and expect some of this to happen. So we can prepare for it a little bit and, and put out educational and safety, safety communications about doing it safely. But there are times when it is, it is more unsafe to do so. And so I think all of this discussion though, it's, it's more about for me making sure that we have the proper authority imbued in the experts that we have in our community to be able to make the call. And, and for this discussion, I think that's not with the city council. I think that's with the, the experts in the fire department to use their expert discretion to, to let us know when those things are, are at that level of danger where these, these bans may, temporary bans may need to be put into place. And so that's, that's what we did with the, the previous ordinance tonight for the future. But also leaving it with them to, to use their professional expertise to make that call, given the authority that they currently have in the, in the, in the fire code. And I think that's where I would leave it is, is with people that know more about assessing the broader fire danger than I do. I mean, I can look outside in my yard and see how dry my grass is and know that I shouldn't be lighting off fireworks anywhere near that. But in terms of the community-wide aspects and the, and the regional aspects, I don't know the first thing about assessing fire danger in the broader community. So I would leave that with our experts.
Other comments. Eileen, and then we'll go to Pat. Eileen and then Pat.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Dan for, you know, for giving us those fine technical points. My, my, I have a little more of an emotional comments to make. I think Independence Day and our community celebration has a special significance this year. We're recovering from COVID. We are going to get past this drought, this unprecedented weather event. We have reason to celebrate as a community. And maybe this is a time to kind of set aside some of these smaller differences and, and look at our community and say, look what we have accomplished. Our strength and resilience brings us to this point. We can have our community celebration. We can encourage people to resolve, to refrain from using personal fireworks this year. And when they hear the music and when the fireworks go up, get out into the street, look up, see those fireworks, rejoin with your neighbors. Celebrate with your neighbors, pass around a few beverages and reacquaint and celebrate what we have accomplished together. This is our Independence Day. We are remaining free, independent and in control of our own lives. And this is what Independence Day has always meant in this community and I hope many others. Let's have some fireworks. Let's get out and enjoy them in our neighborhoods and learn to respect our strength, our resilience, our resolve. Let's have the fireworks.
Pat Wright, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't articulate what my three colleagues just put forward. Excellent thoughts, all three of you. I really appreciate that. And Eileen, I hadn't put it in those terms, but you are absolutely correct. We finally have a fully open state. It's time to celebrate that. And I never do personal fireworks anyway, so certainly not going to be doing it this year. And like having the option going forward to, you know, make those determinations in the future. Thank you.
Since we have Chris Waring and, and Ryan Scharnhorst on, and since we have our fire experts. In terms of fire danger this year, yes, we've put out notices about personal fireworks. Chris, do you want to go first on this? Because I know this is, I know we have rolling patrols that we do with our fire crews on the third and fourth, and we have other things that we take as prevention. Why don't we go there and then Ryan, you can talk about fire danger too. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I just want to, I agree with everything that everyone is saying. And I also agree with Nathan Weller that, that you can celebrate without setting off explosives. First off, I just want to say that we have been selling fireworks in the city of Pullman for the last two days. The fireworks stand in the county has been selling fireworks for the past five days. And they have been selling fireworks in Idaho for months. So people are, already have their fireworks and they're going to be lighting them. Tony and I have been doing patrols the last couple of nights in the evenings where we're chasing down where we hear them. I'm going out tonight and Tony's going out tonight. We'll be out tomorrow night and Sunday night. We interact with the, the community, make sure they're being very safe. We measure, make sure they have the proper fireworks, that they have illegal fireworks. We confiscate them. We're doing everything that we can to protect the community and it's, it's just us roaming the streets, driving around, looking for people lighting off fireworks and I agree with all the council members of being able to, we're back to being 100% whole after this COVID. And let's celebrate and you can celebrate with fireworks or without, but that's up to you folks. And that's all I have to say. So.
Assistant Chief Scharnhorst. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to fire danger, currently listed on the Washington Department of Natural Resources website, our region is listed as very high. The only other option above that is extreme. We are not listed extremely central part of the state is there. We all know that this has been a dry spring into summer. Many have compared it on the forecasting side from the National Weather Service and other partner the summer of 2015 in regards to the number of fires starts across eastern Washington. And when you look at that and I look back into our data on the July three, four of 2015, we had a total of four fires that were started from fireworks. And they were grass and brush with a little bit of melted siding on one of them for a total of $2,000 damage in 2015. Fire danger is a concern. It has been a concern for the fire department this spring. Just this recent heat oven that we were under and slowly are getting out of has just brought that more on all of us as we go to bed every night even. It is just hot and dry. Discarded cigarettes have started ground cover fires in the city over the past two weeks. Every year, the fire marshal confiscates illegal fireworks. Those are going to be in our community. They're not supposed to be. And they will be here this year, just like they will be here next year. So fireworks are a concern, but the, the, the concern is about the fire danger and how dry the conditions are. I participated in many meetings on Wildland Fire on a weekly basis. And just last night, we were talking about the region, southeast region of Washington State, all the way over to Yakima, up to Wenatchee. And there have been a lot of starts, but the key that you haven't seen big fires yet, and we all anticipated them, I think, we, it's safe to assume, is that initial attack. They've gotten on them quickly with a better plan in place and they've kept them small. And, and that's just astonishing. And that is our plan here as well, regardless of how we come out of this meeting. We have our historical staffing in regards to staffing the night of the fireworks. If it's permitted to go forward with District twelve combination response, automatic aid. And we will be, staff will stations are higher staff now than they have been in the last five years on that night. And so here in the city of Pullman, I think we are best positioned as we can be knowing that that fire danger is high, but we're doing what we can to make sure that we can have that fast initial attack response to keep any and all fires as small as possible.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chris. Laura, do you want to chime in on this in terms of responsibility and breach of contract and what other levels we may have?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Council, I don't believe you have any legal authority to either revoke the retail sales permit that have been issued or to revoke the permits that have been issued for the public display of fireworks. State law, thus that authority in the fire official. So I, I, I certainly understand the concerns and appreciate all the thoughts that have been expressed. But I don't believe you, as a city council, have the legal authority to do anything in regards to those permits. If you did, it would fall under the requirement that for a city council to take action on anything related to the public display of fireworks or the discharge of consumer fireworks, that has to have 365 days notice. So that's, that's the information I want you to have.
And also one other item, if the council did take action, which would be breach of contract, WCIA, which normally ensures us, what's the coverage for council members taking an action that, that is not, as you say, legal?
So, so Mayor, I haven't, I haven't reviewed the contract that the chamber has with the pyrotechnics operator for the public display. So I can't comment on, on whether that's a breach of contract. I think what you're, you're asking is what's the, what's the situation in terms of insurance coverage and liability? If the city council takes action that your legal counsel has told you that he or she does not think you have the authority to do, that, that triggers personal liability and would actually enable WCIA to exclude coverage and deny a defense. If, if, if someone were to sue the city for the city council taking an action that the city attorney has advised is not within your authority.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, Nathan, you had your hand up again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I-
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I appreciate everything that everybody said. And, you know, I agree with everybody on the council. I just want to make sure everybody understands this was not meant to be a divisive discussion. You know, certainly did not want to disregard anything that the experts, I think everybody on here knows. I've always been supportive of our staff and the experts when it comes to all matters. And same with the city council. I think it's important, and this is why I mentioned this before, to continue to have good relations with chamber. And I did feel that putting this on there of provoking that would put us at continual odds with something that has been in the community for a while. So, I just want to make sure that everybody understands this was not meant to be divisive. It was meant, as I mentioned, to bring up the citizen concerns that we have received this year, which are increasing, at least thirteen that I registered on our email alone. That doesn't count social media. I would also like to, and it looks like she has her mute off, so I'll be quiet. I just wanted them, everybody out there, to know that. So.
Okay, Ann Parks.
Thank you, Nathan, and thank you, Mayor. Oh, boy, where to start? Okay, so I think Nathan made a very good point that I also wanted to make is that the fireworks are not a city-sponsored event. They are a chamber event. And so, that further in my thoughts contributes to our not really being able to control them, I guess, if that's the way I want to say that. I think that it's too late in the game to change the city fireworks at this point. I don't think it's, I understand the thought behind it, but I also feel that there are professionals in charge. We do have our fire personnel ready should something happen. And I feel very comfortable with that event continuing on. And I also really take, thank Laura for advising us that council does not really have the legal authority to revoke licenses or permits at this time. And so, I don't feel that that would be a prudent action for us to take today. I do, I will feel much better next year when this ordinance is in place and these actions can be considered. But right now, for item number two, I feel that it is not an appropriate action for us to take. Thank you.
So, and so, at this point, Nathan, if you wanted to make a motion to delay the public display, you can, but we'll go from there. You're not, I see.
No, I, it's.
Discussion, okay.
It's a chamber.
Then we'll move on to item number three, which is the last item, again, on a special council schedule. We can only deal with the three items that have been brought up there. Next is the discussion of potential action or emergency action banning the discharge of fireworks within city limits. This was actually brought out by Al Sorenson, who is not on here, but Mike Urban will be talking about it. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have several conversations about this with council members. And based on Laura's advice, if it's not on the agenda, no action can be taken. So, I wanted to make sure if this was something that wanted to be discussed, it was something that was placed on the agenda. Because when the emergency meeting was called to discuss fireworks, there's enough vagueness where I felt like we'd better include everything that I have discussed with everybody over the past couple of days to make sure that it's available and time for further discussion or action if necessary. As far as what we're doing here on city, I wanted to mention, we did issue a June 30th news release strongly discouraging personal fireworks from the city staff, the police chief, the fire chief, and myself. That is the limit of our ability is to strongly discourage, based on the ordinances we had in place. Next year, that changes. And thank you very much for giving us some more flexibility as the year goes on. As far as potential action banning them this year, I just really wanted to put this on there so a discussion could happen. And if action wanted to be taken, that you could certainly do this. And that's really all I have to add to this particular item.
And in a way, we've already sort of discussed that in these other items that we've had, unless the council sees something else that you would like to add to this in terms of the discussion. Brandon, looks like you're getting ready to face anything?
Yeah, no, just in general, you know, one thing that Nathan had brought up, and he alluded to the council retreat, but making sure we communicate this out. So, all of these decisions, we can all play a part in making sure that whatever that message is, we amplify it. Because Nathan is right, that not everybody's going to see or hear some of these things. But if each of us plays our role, then at least we get more people.
And I think some of you were on the council a number of years ago, and we actually did address the ordinance and limited the number of days of sale and number of the time that was there. And we had a full council chamber with a lot of people on both sides, and we heard about dogs. And yes, we know that. And we certainly have that at the Johnson house with a dog that does not like fireworks. But they're not hearing it from Sunnyside. They're hearing it from the personal ones that are around. But yes, we have heard many of those from both sides. And not just thirteen, we've heard from a lot of different people with different opinions. And many of them do not know about the limitations of Washington state law, that you can only do so much on this. Other comments from council. Dan Records?
I just wanted to bring the discussion back around because at earlier points in the discussion, it was mentioned that there are sections of the International Fire Code that that kind of sound like they give authority to the chief fire official to make determinations about public safety. But I just want to bring that back around because, you know, it's pretty clear from our discussion, I think, that the city council does not have the authority to make those decisions for this year. The ordinance that we passed was to make it very clear that the fire official does have that authority to make those determinations about the fire danger in the future. But we have that state law that requires we wait 365 days. But the provisions in the International Fire Code don't exactly say, it's not exactly clear on the issue of fireworks, what that authority is. And so, there are some jurisdictions that may try to stretch that. But in terms of having the most legally defensible position, that's why we went forward with the ordinance. And I wondered if Laura might want to make any comments about that, just because I just don't want to give people the impression that we are leaving something on the table that we could have taken action. But really, in terms of what the state allows us to do in terms of fireworks regulation, what we did with the ordinance is preparing for the future so that we make it a little more clear that we do have that authority. So, Laura, is there any comments you want to make about that part of it?
Absolutely. Thank you, council member. The state law, actually, the state fireworks law, Chapter seventy point seventy-seven, does already authorize the chief fire official to rescind a permit for the public display of fireworks in the case of an extreme fire danger. And a burn ban is given as an example of that. But it is, again, left to the discretion of the professionals to determine whether situations, conditions exist such that a permit should be suspended or revoked. So, I do believe that the fire department has that ability and authority already if conditions were to change and worsen, such that your professionals that are on the call tonight believe that it's necessary to suspend the chamber's permit, they could do that.
Hey, Eileen McCall?
Just a footnote, if somebody would refresh my recollection, our local fire officials have made last-minute changes over the years in terms of our fireworks display on the Fourth of July. It's been canceled a couple of times because of extreme cold. And it's been postponed an hour or thereabouts a couple of times because of wind. So, they definitely are on the minute on that every single event that we have. They have that, they have the ability to think on their feet and make those decisions in terms of ultimate safety for the community.
Okay, seeing a lot of further comments. And did you have some comments?
Yes, please. Thank you. I just wanted to briefly say that, again, thank everybody for being at this meeting. I really, my largest motivator, motivation for having this was just to let the public know that we have heard them and we do, and we took their concerns seriously. And we, as has been illustrated here, we didn't know what we could do or what we couldn't do. And so, by our all getting together with our city attorney and the fire personnel and staff, I think it's really, that's what I needed, at least as a council member, to find out, yes, I hear your concern, but I'm really not sure what I can do about it. And so, I hope the public realizes that we really, you know, are doing our due diligence, but we are limited, as has been pointed out here. And we have taken some action to go forward. So, thank you.
With that, since we've had the special meeting, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Moved in second. And the second came from Nathan. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, thank you and have a great weekend.